Everyone. We welcome you to our Board of Education regular meeting, June 1st. We have our wonderful Student School Board member, Rena Ignacio, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Seems like I just read this two hours ago, but I'll read it again.
We welcome those of you who are here for the purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. I have a stack of public comments here. You may also request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as it can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the chair and not to individual members of the board or staff. The board met in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that no reportable actions were taken. Sorry, folks, we just ended a special meeting and now we're reconvening to this regular meeting. So if I'm a little bit off, it's because we weren't back-to-back meetings. Next item is public hearing. We don't have any comments for public hearing, right? Okay. So this time had been set aside regarding the following local control accountability plan. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to that item? So I declare the hearing closed. And the adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. Anyone here who wishes to speak on that item? So, none? And I also declare that hearing closed. We will move on to call for agenda items for separate action adoption of the agenda as posted. Dr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to pull item 13.1 and also move item 15 to follow the approval of minutes 12.1.
Move approval of the agenda as amended.
Any discussion? So let's take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No abstentions? That passes 5-0. Approval of minutes?
Move approval.
Second?
Any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No abstentions? That passes 5-0. And then that brings us to our student school board member report. Ms. Ignacio.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rena Ignacio, current ASB president at Poly High School. I'm very thrilled to be here today. Thank you so much for having me. This past spring semester, ASB has put together several events such as the Winter Formal Dance, Intercultural Fair, and our annual Jackrabat Pageant. In March, our formal event hosted 350 Poly students. It was wonderful to bring back this formal event after coming back from the pause we had in January. After formal, we had over 70 clubs participate in our Intercultural Fair, a school-wide carnival-like event where our campus comes together to honor each other's cultures through food, drinks, entertainment, and games. This past April, we held our 27th Annual Jackrabat Pageant, a talent show that showcases our seniors. Head coordinators Soraya Sum, Darren Tan, and Melana Ross were able to pull off a fantastic show with 12 contestants. Winners Ben Farfan and Inanna Konza knocked our judges' socks off with their talents, a whimsical circus act, and a beautiful violin piece. We were also able to bring back PolyNorth after two years. For those who have not heard of PolyNorth, it is a humans' relation camp in Big Bear Lake where kids are able to connect with others through educational seminar groups. This weekend on the mountain breaks down the barriers of high school misconceptions, allowing students to interact with new people. Many are able to explore the unique qualities we each share as human beings. This year, we had two successful camps marking the 47th year of our PolyNorth program. We ended April with one of ASB's biggest fundraisers, our book fair at the Long Beach Town Center, Barnes &amp; Noble, where our ASB hosted crafts for kids and open mic dominated by our Polydrama Department and showed off our Poly pride. Over that weekend, we were able to raise over $1,600. This past May, we have celebrated AAPI Month through our Wellness Week in collaboration with KGA, Kamai Girls in Action, our Meds Pathway Program, the We Rise Organization, and the Arts Council for Long Beach. In addition, yesterday, as we finished off AAPI Month, our PolyKai Bigon Club performed a Filipino cultural dance, Kultenik Ling, on the rally stage during lunch. Last week, ASB and our co-commissions of athletics Haley Pickens and Mikhail Jackson planned our all-sports signing day where we had 41 athletes sign their full ride scholarships to a four-year institution. This was one of our largest groups of athletes since 2019. Athletes committed to several colleges around the country. In addition, our auditorium was filled with many families, friends, and even the 562.org as they came to support and celebrate our students. Last week was quite busy for our seniors on campus, as we also had our senior decision day. Last Friday, 350 students attended the celebration completely for free, which was planned and hosted by our USC College advisors, Ms. Casey and Ms. Alonja from the College and Career Center. On Friday, seniors celebrated with food, music, games, and even a celebrity guest, Manny Montana, a Jordan Panther alum. Shout out to J-Town from the hit show Good Girls. As we finish off this school year, PolyASB is prepared to continue showering our seniors with lots of love and celebration. This upcoming Saturday is our prom, hosted by our senior senate. The theme is "When the Stars Align." Our senate has been working very hard to prepare this final dance for our seniors. And as someone who has been in ASB all throughout high school, I'm very excited to finally have an event where I don't have to work. To end off our school year, seniors will also have the chance to participate in our grad night, senior breakfast, grad walk to Roosevelt Elementary, senior picnic, and of course, graduation. The class of 2022 has much to look forward to as we finish off our final year of high school. While we celebrate our seniors in this final month, we would also like to acknowledge the underclassmen. For the rest of campus, our PolyPathway presidents have planned an upcoming movie night this Friday in collaboration with our ASB. Each pathway will be participating selling different snacks, desserts, and drinks. And we will be screening Avengers: Endgame. The Polystudent Body has a lot to look forward to this June. Thank you for always supporting our students and lifting our community to do better for each other. As our activities director, Mr. Puth would say, "Go Jackrabbits."
Amazing stuff going on at Poly. How are you feeling two weeks away from the end of your senior year?
Kind of nervous, but excited in high school.
Yeah. What are your plans?
I'm going to be attending Cal State Fullerton with a major in Human Services Elementary Education.
Awesome.
Mr. Zaid.
And who's here with you?
Oh, Mr. Salas is here in the audience today.
Mr. Salas, thank you.
There we go.
Comments? Questions? Colleagues?
So I did have a question.
Yes.
With, what, two weeks left? There's a number of things that you said are going on.
Prom, grad night, senior picnic, senior breakfast, and then our grad walk to Roosevelt Elementary.
Of all of those things, which one are you most excited about?
Probably prom this Saturday.
You all ready, chastened, ready to go?
For the most part, yes.
Yeah, prom's the best.
I love the fact that you didn't have to work at that.
Yeah. My final celebration this year.
Well, congratulations. You're going to be an amazing addition to CSU Fullerton. And then hopefully someday you come back as an educator to our district.
I would love to.
Yeah. Thank you. Well, there's a person you should know right there. So we're going to start our meeting. You're more than welcome to excuse yourself. We know it's a school night and it doesn't sound like you have anything going on at Poly anyway. So thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We will move on to our recognitions and acknowledgements. Classified Employee of the Year, Mr. Itson.
Well, today we're celebrating being classified employees.
The classified employees are the other part of our team that helps to educate students every day. They come to work, they do a lot of the different functions other than just the classroom. They keep our schools clean, they supply our schools, they help to keep our budget straight.
The classified employees are like the glue that keeps everything together, keeps everything working. Without us, there'll be nothing. We keep the lights on.
As you can see, we've got long lines of people coming, hot dogs, hamburgers. We've got vendors here that are supply and support the school district in terms of services
From these nominees, our committee that we have recognized a group of finalists who have stood out in their nomination as reflecting the various ideals of the Classified Employee of the Year.
We have a very elaborate process where we have other employees, could be teachers, could be administrators, other classified employees can nominate people for their Classified Employee of the Year. We have a committee that reviews every single one of them. And from there, we come up with finalists. It's because they reflect a lot of the values that we see that are real important for employees.
I'm very happy, but I'm surprised, pleasantly surprised, that, yeah, I got picked to be nominated to be the Employee of the Year. So kind, very kind of them. I'm so thankful to everyone that gave me such a recognition. This is a great honor that I couldn't even forget.
It just adds to the sociability and the community that we have and the spirit of what Long Beach is all about.
I'd just like to see the fact that the classified employees were all able to gather together and just connect with one another. And in some cases, it's reconnecting. It's a really family-type of atmosphere. And there's just a lot of enjoyment and celebration and a little bit of exhaling from a very tough time in the last couple of years.
Congratulations. Once again to Mr. Grover, Kim, and all of the finalists as our classified employees. That was a fun event, too, a couple Fridays ago. Mr. Cotto?
Good evening, President Benitez, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Baker, and members of executive staff. We had a celebration of classified heroes on May 20th at the 21st Classified Employee Celebration. This year, we had 517 employees attend the event, and we had numerous volunteers and donation from contributors around the community, which include many people in this room. On behalf of the committee who organized this event, I want to thank all of you and those Long Beach businesses and organizations for everyone's participation because we really couldn't do this event without you. I wanted to give a moment to recognize our personnel commissioners, who also wanted to be here to support the Classified Employee of the Year, Vice Chairperson Cheryl Bender, and member Terry Yulashewski. Three dimensions are used in determining the Employee of the Year. They are how much the employee supports the educational mission of the district by contributing to the classroom support and/or business operations of the district, that the employee demonstrates a commitment to being a team player and a positive role model for others, and that the employee goes above and beyond in his or her performance. This year, we received 34 nominations for 17 employees for this award, and we have six finalists. There is a committee of employees who were on the selection committee, and we carefully review every single nomination. So including myself, there are Chris Aptitou from the Public Information Office, Janelle Harmon from HRS, Michelle Francis from CASA, and Viola May Bledsoe from CSCA. I'd like to mention that there were five finalists who stood out among the nominees, and they also made it through, and it's a very important group. Gregory Broadway, Plant Supervisor II at the Marshall Academy for the Arts. Marcel Hodges, Nutrition Services Worker at Cabrillo High School. Elizabeth Magla Song, Instructional Aid Special at Edison Elementary. Toma McGuire, Recreation Aid at Holmes Elementary. This is our first recreation aid that we've ever nominated. And Norma Pacheco, Campus Staff Assistant at Cabrillo High School. Our winner is a custodian who is described by coworkers as being an inspirational member of the Jefferson Leadership Academy's family. While Mr. Kim takes his job of cleaning the site very seriously, he also has a caring attitude towards the employees and visitors to the site. He was that smiling face that they count on to make every day brighter. Some staff members could actually not recall this employee missing any day of work ever. The words "helpful and generous" were additional adjectives used to describe this employee. When staff needed a reminder about an important task or event at the school, Mr. Kim made sure to leave a note, they call a Groverism, so that no one missed out. Grover responded to whatever task another staff member needed, whether it be to beautify a classroom or to move furniture. This candidate would walk employees to their cars at night and complete tasks in such a short period of time that everybody swore that there were two of them. A memorable moment was when this employee purchased bottled water during the heat wave to stock the staff refrigerator for everyone to use, and then kept reloading that refrigerator throughout the entire heat wave. We should all be fortunate to have such a member of staff on our team. So Grover Kim from the Leadership Academies is our 2022 Classified Employee of the Year. He could not be here tonight. However, in his place, Mr. Dwight Kaufman, the Plant Supervisor at the school, and Grover's immediate supervisor is here to be recognized on behalf of Mr. Kim.
So Grover is the Energizer Bunny. He does everything. And I'm emotional because when I leave, I can trust that everything's going to get done. And I always thank him, I always tell him I appreciate him. And then back in December, I think I emailed Mr. Cotto and figured out when was the nomination going to take place and so I could start the process because I had to find another way to thank him. And he really didn't want to come to the celebration. I was like, "No, you got to go to that." And he really didn't want to come here tonight because he just wants to work. He doesn't want to be in the limelight or being recognized. So he's really shy. So I said, "He does way too much for me to force him to come here." So I'm here to say thank you. Thank you to him, and thank you guys for giving him the award.
Ken, can I ask one thing? I'm going to ask my colleagues here. Since he's not able to be here tonight, can we make sure that he watches tonight's video? And I'd love to give him a standing ovation and appreciation for everything he does for our district. Our next item is our National Board Certified Teachers.
This is also a video recognition of nationally board certified teachers, but I'd like to recognize, I believe Ryan Ung is in the audience. Thank you, Ryan, for being here as we acknowledge nationally board certified teachers. Ryan is the Program Coordinator in the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Professional We don't have a video this evening. So Ryan, come up so we can thank you on behalf of the nationally board certified teachers. Come up to the podium. I know that we'll be offering a set of signed certificates for teachers who are first-time recipients of national board certification and also those who have renewed. Those have been signed by the Board President and myself, so we'll send our regards to all of them and thank them for their service. Thank you.
Thank you. Wasn't expected to speak, as you can tell, but yeah, thank you for this opportunity on behalf of all the nationally board certified teachers, those that are newly certified. And we also have two groups, those that have maintained their certification to continue their professional growth for the next five years, and those that renewed their certification for their certification the last 10 years. So thank you for that opportunity and thank you for recognizing them.
Thank you, Brian, and congratulations to you and all of our nationally board certified teachers.
Thank you.
Dr. Baker, can you say a few things about what that national board certification is?
And you're welcome to come up and correct me, but national board certification is a process that teachers choose to go through that takes them through an opportunity to reflect on their practice and then to provide several essays and reflections of their classroom, including video analysis of their own teaching that gets reviewed outside of the district by an impartial party, so to speak. There are different components of that certification that some teachers persist in having to redo sections until they pass the certification process. And then after the nationally board certified, they provide services in the district beyond the traditional school day that comes because of the expertise that they've gained by going through the process.
Amazing. So going above and beyond the impact that all of you have on our students. So thank you and congratulations once again. Do we have a video for student staff and school celebrations? Thank you, Mr. Itson.
Kwan King, and I'm currently a senior at Avalon High School. Kwan is a product of the inner city. I'm born and raised in Nigga's and Grandin' Projects in Watts, California. I actually had a train accident where I lost both my left limbs at nine years old. I've had one arm and one leg, but been pretty resilient, still play basketball, still do the same stuff as any other person. The challenges were both mental and physical, just the emotional bearing of, oh, what's wrong with him? Why is he different than us? And just the physical, like, pain of it all, too, just learning how to walk again. Coming to Avalon taught me how to live, right? Because coming from the projects, you were exposed to bad things at a young age. I never had like a really loving family, but I met a friend here and she kind of invited me into her family, so I got a family now. I'm kind of getting introduced to the real life just in this small community, if that makes sense. I really learned how to live here, to be honest, the right way.
Wow. Big props to Kwan. Okay, you more than made up for yourself on that one, Mr. Itson. Thank you. Next, we have public testimony on items listed on the agenda. We have none, just to confirm. Okay, thank you, Leticia. And so that will move us to public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. And we'll start with Diana Michelson.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Diana, and I'm a student at Long Beach Polytechnic High School. And I know you've all heard from me a lot, but I just wanted to give you a recap of my last couple of months. In fact, probably why you haven't seen my face for the last couple of weeks. Sure you all missed it. But I was recently elected, not elected, but chosen to be part of the Long Beach Youth CAP Program, which is essentially run through the Long Beach Sustainability Office. It's a 10-week program where I've essentially had the opportunity to work in restoration projects, tree plantings, you name it. But what I've learned, what was most interesting about this program was last week, we actually had a tour of Long Beach, and I kind of went into it thinking, I've lived here for like 10 years, what are we doing? But it was actually the most I've learned ever. In the span of two hours, we went from downtown Long Beach, we drove past the multimillion-dollar houses, then through downtown Long Beach, seeing all the new construction with the Billie Jean King Main Library and the park. And then we went to the port. And I think that first, it's really important to mention that there are a lot of things to be proud of in our city. I'm not sure if you're aware, but they actually installed a new terminal there that is almost completely automated. So that reduces, you know, greenhouse gases, it uses electricity, so once again, no more natural gases and less fossil fuels, and a greater opportunity to transition to clean energy. But then we went to the other side of the port, and then we went to right, I forget the location, but exiting towards just right where Cabrillo is. And there's an affordable housing unit there called Century Villages at Cabrillo. It's right off the freeway, the 710, sorry. And the way the people living there were described were air filters. They're air filters for the rest of our community. And it's a disturbing thought, and it's even more disturbing when you look at the map and you see that Cabrillo High School is right there, Elizabeth Hudson Elementary School is right there. Frankly, we are right next to a port, not a port, but I'm sure if you go outside, you'll see all the shipping containers. We are breathing this in, and it's a social justice issue. It is a human rights issue. It is a problem, and I'm here to speak on behalf of, you know, the Green Schools Campaign and to encourage all of the board members to not only support the 100% clean energy resolution when it comes to the board in three weeks, or hopefully three weeks if everything goes as planned, but also to push for more because 2030, 2040, which is still in the air, I know we're still working for it, it's just the minimum. So that's it for tonight, but just keep the fight up. Please, you know, make our students proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lauren Griffith.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Lauren Griffith, and I am a student at Polytechnic High School. I am also a resident of Carson, and recently I've been becoming more involved in our environment and becoming more aware of the dangers posed by the refineries and the factories in the surrounding areas. So after looking into it, I became really scared about the direction that our planet is going to. And I have a grandma that lives in the area, and I have a lot of friends that have asthma and other issues. So while I'm really worried about their health, so while I'm excited to see the change that's happening within the district, after looking at the current board policy, I'm worried that a policy without a timeline isn't saying much. So a timeline needs to be put in place. At the latest, we need 100% clean energy by 2030 and 100% clean electricity by 2030 and 100% clean energy in all sectors by 2040. So we will continue to work with the Facilities Department, and I'm excited that I have the opportunity to speak and have a voice, but the decision-makers in the room, we are urging you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Lilly Palmer?
Good evening. Good evening. Hello, LBSD Board. My name is Lilly, and I'm a sophomore at Milliken High School here with the Long Beach Green Schools Campaign. I would like to begin by saying thank you for the opportunity to attend the Facilities Master Plan Community Forum at Browning High School. I hope that the district will continue to listen to these voices, both those of experts and non-experts. There was a clear desire in this forum to be innovative and ambitious moving forward, and we hope that the district will continue to take this into consideration. I would also like to say that we're grateful for the opportunity to be included in the revisions of Board Policy 3510. We are aware that there is still much to be discussed and decided in terms of the policy, such as the development of recycling goals and how to structure the policy. However, we would like to reiterate the importance of including 2030 and 2040 goal dates, and as I mentioned earlier, the importance of being ambitious with our goals. Without ambitious deadlines, there is a lot of room for procrastination. Even if we do not meet the goals we set, we will make much more progress towards them if we are ambitious, and this is a necessity. We urge you to make the right decision for the district and vote yes on the board policy amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Angelique Patterson.
Good evening. Good evening. Now, back to celebrations. Good evening, Superintendent Baker, executive staff, and members of the board. My name is Angie Patterson. I'm president of LBSLA, and it's my pleasure to introduce our first Teacher Librarian of the Year, Donna Sharp. Donna Sharp became the Avalon Teacher Librarian in 2002 after working as a substitute teacher for several years. She commuted from Catalina Island on weekends and during the summer to complete her coursework for the Teacher Librarian Services credential. Avalon School is the only K-12 school in LBSD, so her regular responsibilities involved everything from reading stories to kindergartners, to helping high school students research term papers, and fill out college applications. Because Avalon K-12 is a small school, Donna wears many hats. In addition to maintaining a robust library program for all students, the Avalon Teacher Librarian position evolved to include responsibility on onsite technology installation and troubleshooting, which Donna excelled. For several years, her assignment included creating the master schedule annually and scheduling 7th through 12th grade students into their classes, as well as running the quarter and semester grade reports. In recent years, she's been assigned to teach the class that produces the annual school yearbook. She's volunteered for additional activities for the benefit of students, such as being the Avalon Coordinator for the Building Bridges Camp, which enables Island students to spend a weekend with students from other schools, other cultures, and other perspectives. She also raised money for the school library by recruiting staff and friends to help her operate stations for the annual Catalina Marathon. In 2011, Donna successfully completed the rigorous program of becoming a national board certified teacher and has acted as a mentor to many staff members and new teachers. Donna has been a coordinator for multiple successful cycles of Avalon's WASC accreditation. One of her most recent supporting roles has been as the Talb Site Rep. She advocates for teachers, relays information, questions, and concerns, and goes above and beyond the support of her staff members. Donna will be greatly missed, but we are extremely happy for her and her new adventures. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Thank you, Ms. Patterson. So Dr. Baker, you know, I wasn't aware that we had a Teacher Librarian of the Year Award. Do you want to come back up, Ms. Patterson?
Oh, yeah, okay, so we're all new to our positions at LBSLA and we kind of dropped the ball on getting it in celebrations. So we're just putting it in public comments so we could at least get a recognition for our two teacher librarians. Our next one will be honored as well.
Well, we appreciate you coming and we'll, we'll make sure to note that.
And next year, we'll make sure we get here on time.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Okay, thank you. Next, we have Glenda Culbertson. So this is also a Teacher Librarian of the Year?
Yes, I am.
Excellent.
Yes, she is. Good evening, School Board Members, President Benitez, Superintendent Baker and Executive Staff. My name is Glenda Culbertson and I'm here to speak about Susan McRoberts, our Teacher Librarian of the Year. Susan taught at elementary, K-8 and middle school libraries, 13 in all, and formed memories that stayed with her forever. At International, now Oropesa Elementary, Susan was the first librarian at the school. The bungalows housed the office, classes and the library. Her first computer arrived at the school. She sat a president for future librarians at International while working at three schools and pregnant during the year. At Gant, Susan was under a library table, hanging on to a leg as the old lights were swaying back and forth and she thought the school was going to collapse on her. It was the Whittier quake magnitude 5.9, the biggest one she ever felt. Hudson was her first K-8 library and the most wonderful Renaissance fair with music, costumes, crafts, food and jousting. Bryant had the most integrated playground she had ever seen. She attributed that to the fact the neighborhood was integrated, it was a small, sweet school. The immersion program at Patrick Henry blew her away. By fifth grade, the students were fluent in Spanish and the teachers were amazing and they still are. Susan was later assigned to Hamilton, which was filled with murals, tapestries, chess tables and stained glass windows left behind by our retired librarian and local artist Helen Cox. She loved the room and is still there. She loves the room and she is still there. After a few years of being full-time at Hamilton, Susan was at Bancroft this year, working 50/50 with Hamilton. Bancroft is being upgraded, so the experience of boxing up and discarding books all year long will keep her strong. The end of her career at LBSD is timely with the temporary closing of Bancroft's library. We will miss Susan and her presence at our district staff meetings, California School Library Association, our Long Beach School Library Association, conferences, workshops and Hamilton's golf tournament in the spring. We can also, we can't wait to see her rejuvenated in a few months, reading, playing tennis, playing golf and hopefully joining our substitute teacher staff. We're certain she will continue to be proactive about issues regarding school libraries. Congratulations to Susan on achieving Teacher Librarian of the Year. We wish her the very best.
Thank you, Ms. Culbertson. And congratulations to Susan. That's awesome. Tim Gilmore.
Good evening. Hello, good evening. My name is Tim Gilmore. I started a 501-3CK called Long Beach Poly Alumni Association in 2011. Tonight, I want to talk to you about getting Poly High School approved by Long Beach Unified to have a limited amount of games, home games, to help the program save some money. As you know, the football program costs about 100K to maintain. The two documents that I have, the first one that you received is a document that I put down, the research that I produced with DSA. And I talked to Mr. Carlos Aveo just recently, the project manager. And there was a misunderstanding about the parking for the athletic facility a while back. And he explained to me that it could be done, but it was a misunderstanding with his department. But it's very important that you understand that we can do it, we can do it as long as we have ADA access and such. Then I talked to Southern Bleachers, which is the second document, David McCollin, who said that he could basically put a $5,000 seating capacity there. And it cost about 5 million and take probably about two years. So it'll take a little bit of a time. Again, I talked to Chief Wally Habish, Literacy Fair. And he told me that Poly Games would be safe, would be okay to have games there. So in conclusion, I'd like to do, to get this done for our students and I'd like to keep the, the politics away from it. And I know this has community support because Poly's been around a long time. For Keith Lilly, alumni 1972, says he's definitely behind it. And so, Mr. President, I would like to see if, one, we could possibly put this on the agenda sometimes in the near future. And the other thing is, I'd like to see if we could stop blaming Poly football coaches for bringing this to my attention. I have two days left. I want to thank those who have been praying for me. Two days left of my radiation. And I'm very happy to hopefully get back and do more talking here. God is good and I'm very happy about that. And I want to pray for those students or for those people in Ukraine because they're going through a lot of difficult time. So I want to thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to thank everyone that came out to provide public comment today. We appreciate hearing from you. And we will move on to our business items. We'll start with our certificated personnel report. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the superintendent. We'll start with certificated personnel. For appointments, we have 19. And service changes, we have one. Leaves of absence, we have 14. Release of long-term substitute employees, we have 42. Resignations, we have four. Retirements, we have 15. And rescissions, we have one. That's for certificated personnel.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to mention that one of the things I miss from not having our regular meetings is the recognition of our retirees. And right now, one of the retirements that we're accepting is for a teacher at Milliken who's been there for over 30 years. I know it says 32 years, but she started in 1988 and it's now 2022. I'm not real good at math, but I think that's more than 32 anyhow. Yeah. Maybe, and that doesn't matter. But what I wanted to say is Mary Masich, who's at Milliken, has been a fabulous teacher. And I, I am just sorry that we're not able to recognize her in a more meaningful way than just having her name on a list because her contributions to, you know, Milliken and the school district have been just impressive. So it's teachers like that. I wish we were able to return to our regular way of recognizing. And hopefully we'll be able to do that soon.
Thank you, Board Member Craighead. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would also note that among the retirees that we have this year, there are seven that have over 30 years of service. There are four that have over 20 years of service. And there are three that have over 10 years of service. And that's a lot of service. If I could have figured it out on my cellphone, I would have added that up, but I didn't.
387 years, Mr. Otto. I'm just playing.
Were you a math major? You don't look like a math major. But the, the point is, well taken, it's an enormous amount of service to the district. It's, it's quite frankly, several lifetimes and the lifetimes of all of these people who were dedicated teachers for the city of Long Beach, for the Long Beach Unified School District. And we need to recognize that service and we are doing so tonight. I, I too wish that as things settle down now with hopefully the pandemic getting under control, we can appreciate that we're all a family here and that these are very important members of our family.
Agreed. Thank you for that, both colleagues. Any additional discussion? Okay, let's take our vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No abstentions, that passes 5-0. And I'm doing the math over here, Mr. Otto. I'm gonna do it manually.
You want to take a break so you can do it?
We have our classified personnel report. Mr. Miller.
Once again, I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the superintendent. For classified and exempt personnel. For appointments, we have 89. Leaves of absence, we have nine. Resignations, we have seven. Retirements, we have seven. Amendments, we have one. And rescissions, we have one. That's classified and exempt personnel.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's take our vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No abstentions, that passes 5-0. Instruction report.
Move approval?
Any discussion? Let's take our vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions, that passes 5-0. Finance report, A.
Move approval.
Any discussion? Let's take our vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions, that passes 5-0. Finance report, B.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Any further discussion? Let's take our vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes 4-0 with one abstention. Business Department report.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Otto?
Point of order, did we, item 18.3, did we vote on that instruction report?
Yes, sir. And we are now on Business Department report. And we had a motion and a second, so any discussion? That was correct, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we did.
Okay. Okay, so let's take our vote for item, we're on item 18.6. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions, that passes 5-0. So that moves us to item 18.7, Purchasing and Contracts Report, A.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to thank the, an organization called The Give, John Mallinger Charitable Foundation for donating $50,000. That was quite a sizable donation, so thank you.
Any further discussion? Let's take our vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions, that passes 5-0. Purchasing and Contracts Report, B.
Move approval. Did we do A?
We just did.
Wait, that was A.
Oh, sorry. Oh, my gosh.
I'm feeling the same way, Board Member Craighead. Should we start from the beginning, 18.1, do it all over again?
No.
So we need a motion, colleagues?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Purchasing and Contract Report, B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the awardee.
Any further discussion?
We need some waters and some snacks up here ASAP.
Let's do a lap, let's do a lap around the room.
Move approval?
I'm doing good.
We have a motion and a second. We'll take our vote, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, one abstention, that passes 4-0, one abstention. Let's do this, Dr. Baker, Superintendent Items.
Let's see if I can do this. All right. I am making a recommendation about three student expulsions. Unfortunately, tonight, I'll take them one at a time. The first is student number 794. This student would be expelled under Education Code 48900M and would not be eligible to apply for readmission until after January 2023. However, Student Placement Services has made the recommendation this student be expelled with a consideration for a suspended expulsion with an opportunity to attend another school within Long Beach Unified.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's take our vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions, that passes 5-0.
The second student is student 624. This student would be expelled under Education Code 48900M and would not be eligible to apply for readmission until after January 2023.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's take our vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions, that passes 5-0.
And lastly, student 691. This student would be expelled under Education Code 48900.7 and would not be eligible to apply for readmission until after January 2023.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? Let's take our vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions, that also passes 5-0. Next item is administrative assignments, some good news.
Thank you, yes, switching to good news, tonight continues the assignment for many of our vacancies at our schools for administrative positions, as well as a few central office positions. And so in the last meeting, when we did the lion's share of our recommendations, I shared some information publicly about the process that we go through, which is a months-long process to determine the best placement for our administrators into those assignments. We take into consideration a number of things. Schools and the schools that represent the greatest needs, as well as the assignment and the match between the leaders who are either being reassigned or being promoted into those assignments. We also think about the continuous improvement of the school and thinking about student needs at that school and the match of the administrator. We have priority placement. You'll see many of the candidates before you tonight have gone through our Equity Leadership and Talent Development programming and that's a priority for us, that we prepare our leaders to go into the assignments, whether they're first promoting to an assistant principalship or promoting from a management position into the principalship. And then all of our candidates have demonstrated effectiveness as a teacher or counselor in LBSD before they are promoted. Lastly, as you can imagine, there's a connection to our excellence and equity policy. And so our training and all of the ways that we think about promotion or movement into positions includes acknowledgement of leaders who will lead for both excellence and equity. So tonight, I'm going to be passing first to Dr. Lund to announce the middle and K-8 schools' recommendations.
Good evening. I'm going to build on the celebrations that we've had tonight already for Avalon. We've had obviously a student celebration, as well as our Teacher Librarian celebration at Avalon. So this is more good news as it relates to our K-12 school on Avalon. So first, in regard to our principal vacancy at Avalon, we are promoting Emma Peguero from our program specialist position to our principal position. Just some brief information for the public about Emma. Emma was a student at Avalon, a teacher at Avalon, and is now the program specialist at Avalon. So we're very excited to take one of our own students and promote her up into the principal position at Avalon K-12 School. The second position also involves Avalon and it's the counselor position. We have a counselor who's been there for the past year. We're going to move him into the head counselor role at Avalon. That is Jesse Quinteros Nunez, who, like I said, has spent this past year in a counselor position and will move into a head counselor position with your approval. And I'll pass it over to Dr. J. Camarino for our high school.
Thank you, Dr. Lund. Good evening, everyone. Proud to mention some of the names that are removing from positions to assistant principal. We have Melissa Galbreth moving to Jordan High School. Andrea Itzen from Renaissance to assistant principal at Poly. Keith Roberson, who is a TOSA in our SSI program in the high school office, to assistant principal at Wilson. Nancy Freihut would be head counselor at Cabrillo. And Steve Duñez will be, Duñez will be the head counselor at Jordan High School. Also want to mention too, two of our critical members of our high school team who are a part of our SSI program, male, female leadership academies and our math collaborative are Dr. Margot Atkins Jackson, to program administrator in the high school office, as well as Dr. Kimberly Johnson, to program administrator in our high school office.
And the last recommendation this evening is for Katie Hickox, who currently is assistant- who currently is assistant director in the Equity Leadership and Talent Development Office, taking on an expanded role, um, as the program administrator in Equity Leadership and Talent Development Office.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I just would like to make one quick point, and that is, I really appreciate the way that we're doing this now, that, uh, historically, we didn't have the, um, the deputy superintendents talk about their areas and the process that they've gone through to, uh, make these assignments. Excuse me. And, and I think what's important about it is it emphasizes how, uh, everybody works at this and tries to make the best possible choices or matches, if you will, for new assignments. They take it very seriously. Uh, it goes on for much longer than a month. Uh, and, uh, I think that the district feels very good about this, and, and they should. And, uh, by allowing the deputy superintendents to, to say who they're, uh, what changes, administrative changes they are approving, it just emphasizes that and lets the public know that we're on the job, so, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Any further discussion? Uh, well, if, if we, uh, pass this, big shout out to the community of Avalon, uh, for that. Yep. So I will, uh, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions. That passes five zero. Congratulations, uh, to everyone. That takes us to our unfinished business. We have none. New business, we'll start with, uh, item twenty-one point one, compensation for our certificated substitute employees.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, basically, we're, we're giving a raise, Mr. Zay?
Nope.
No, this increase was approved actually last year, but it was approved for one year only.
Okay.
So we're bringing it back, uh, before the board so that it can be ongoing.
Thank you, Mr. Zay. Just seeing if you're still with us there.
Absolutely, and, uh, the years of service for the teachers was four hundred and five.
I got four nineteen, so I must be really off. Uh, I did it. But I was close to the original three eighty-seven. No, I was closer with your tally. Thank you, Mr. Zay. Uh, any other discussion?
Um, I have a question. So, so I do remember, uh, doing this last year. That was for one year. We're voting tonight to make it ongoing for another year or just ongoing? So just on, just to be clear, so this is the rate it will be ongoing?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Effective July first, twenty twenty-two.
Unless the company, yeah, we, that's right. Um, any other discussion?
Well, I, I, I would just make the point that-
We really like this, uh, item over here. Sorry, Mr. Otto, go ahead.
I, I just make the point that what this is, is a, is a vote that shows that we're very interested in maintaining a very high-quality workforce, uh, in a very competitive environment, and we're doing everything that we possibly can for our students. And, uh, and I think that, uh, that everybody on the community and teachers that may want to work here should know that.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Uh, anything else, colleagues? Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions. That passes five zero. Uh, next item is Resolution number zero six zero one two two dash A, a resolution of the Governing Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District regarding the education protection account for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Uh, this is a standard thing that we do every year, so I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's take our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions. That passes five zero. Next item, Resolution number, excuse me, zero six one two two dash B, giving authorization for temporary cash borrowing between funds.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, just, just to clarify, this is something else we do every year, so this is just an item.
It is. June. Um, I have a joke, but I'm gonna keep it to myself tonight.
Please.
I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? No abstentions. That passes five zero. Our last item under new business, Resolution number zero six zero one two two dash C, a resolution of the Governing Board of Education of the Long Beach Unified School District, superseding Resolution number zero six zero two two one dash C, and establishing revolving cash fund for the Long Beach Unified School District.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions. That passes five zero. Report of board members. Um, why don't you start us off, Ms. Kerr?
All right, I'll be quick. Happy Pride Month, everyone. Happy Pride. Um, I was at Hamilton last week, uh, opening our fifth fitness center in the district with the partnership of UCLA Health Sound Body Sound Mind Fitness Center. And this time, special thanks to the Gunther Foundation for making it happen for our, our students at Hamilton. Um, if you haven't been into one of our fitness centers, I highly recommend it. Between the rowing machines, the hand rowing machines, the manipulatives, the bikes, the stair- Like, they have nicer equipment than the gym that I go to. Um, and I know the teachers are excited to use it within the curriculum and the support that, um, is given through the partnership with UCLA Health is pretty incredible. So congratulations to all of those at Hamilton.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Um, Mr. Otto?
Uh, yeah, I, I too will be brief. Uh, last week, or maybe it was the week before that, I, uh, went to, uh, Monterey County to Asilamar for a three-day, uh, very intense professional development program by the Council of Great City Schools for board development. And, uh, it was, uh, it was an excellent program. It lasted from about seven thirty in the morning till about eight o'clock at night, but, uh, uh, there was a lot, uh, it involved, it involved board members from everywhere, from Anchorage, Alaska to Atlanta, Georgia. There were probably about seventy, uh, board members there, and just, uh, meeting with other board members was instructive in and of itself. Most interesting, uh, to me was that the entire San Francisco, uh, Board of Education was there. Uh, and the footnote to that is three of those are appointed people because three of them have just been recalled. And in addition to that, the recently appointed, uh, or hired superintendent from, who had been at the Hayward Unified School District, was also there. And it was, uh, interesting to talk to them about what had been going on up there and, uh, what they intended to do, uh, in the future. I am particularly interested because I have a daughter with a five-year-old that's starting kindergarten in the San Francisco Unified School District, um, excuse me, in the fall. And so, uh, it was good to, to, to talk with them and see in California what they're doing. And secondly, when I came back, uh, it, the, the very next day was the annual, um, middle school, uh, sports banquet put on by the Century Club, and there were a thousand people at the Pyramid in, uh, at Cal State Long Beach. And, uh, you could cut with a knife the excitement of the kids that were honored. Uh, many more were honored this year than had ever been honored before. Uh, and, uh, it was a great venue, and, uh, you could just see kids looking around and thinking about Cal State Long Beach, maybe for the first time, as a place where they, uh, might go to school. It lasted, uh, a long time, but everybody seemed to enjoy it. Uh, Superintendent Baker was there, June Conley, uh, from, Jane Conley from, uh, Cal State Long Beach. Mike Munoz from Long Beach City College was also there, and, uh, it was a terrific event, so, thanks. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Uh, Board Member Kerr, I think you wanted to add one more thing.
I did. Um, I just wanted to give a shout out to the six hundred and thirty-seven students who will be receiving their seal of biliteracy this year. It's a little less than last year just because we had some S-VAC issues with, during COVID. Uh, so this year, those students who've received that seal not only have a seal on their diploma, but will wearing a, a medallion at graduation, so take a look out for it. Congratulations to them.
Uh, Board Member Crackhead?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to report on, uh, attending the high school open house the night after our last board meeting, and my goal was to, uh, visit all three high schools that I represent. I didn't quite make that goal, but I did go to two out of three, um, which, which is not easy because I like to spend a lot of time talking to people, so, um, that was challenging. Everybody did such a great job. The, the atmosphere was electric. I think people are so relieved and happy to be back in person and doing fun things. Uh, at Milliken, they had a huge stage area set up in front of the auditorium for a fashion show. And I believe they had a couple of hundred models, modeling, um, uh, original designs, that, that kind of thing. Um, a lot of people were in attendance. It was very well-attended. Uh, I went to McBride from there, and, again, just a very celebratory atmosphere. I ventured into the gym where they had senior engineering projects and spoke to some of the kids, and they described their projects. And I was very impressed with this team of, uh, female students. Their project was a, uh, solar-powered truck that they designed to be collapsible. And they, they took ideas from furniture like that, um, the dovetail joints on, um, drawers, that, that type of solid construction. They used that type of construction on the, um, on the truck. They also, uh, designed solar panels that folded up, could be put in the back. It was, it was so impressive. Every little part of their project was so impressive. And no surprise to me, both, uh, both these females are gonna be going on to, um, majoring in, in some type of engineering, and, and I'll tell you, they're, they're gonna, uh, they're really gonna be something. So it, it was a great night, uh, open house. It's a good opportunity to see what everybody's been up to and to visit our campuses, uh, with a lot of people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crackhead. Mr. Miller?
First, I want to apologize to Megan because I just made a mess. Thank you. Um, so, uh, there's a couple of things going on in the next, I'd say, uh, two weeks. I shared a little bit of information about them last week, but I'm just gonna, uh, reiterate a couple. Uh, first, uh, tomorrow, Success and Challenges, a local nonprofit organization here. Um, they run a program called Freedom School, which, uh, is a really, really awesome free summer program from youth as young as six years old, uh, all the way up through the twelfth grade of high school. Uh, you can go there for absolutely free for a full day. Uh, it's a reading program. And, uh, I am a, not necessarily a product, but a huge advocate of the program because I used to be an intern with Freedom School when I was in college. Uh, and I got to see firsthand, uh, the power of, uh, taking these young people and literally just focusing on a book and reading and how it, uh, eventually impacts these young men and young women. So, really, really cool program. Uh, with that said, they are, uh, hosting a banquet tomorrow at, uh, the good old Petroleum Club. I haven't been there in a while. Um, I'm excited to see, uh, the interior because I know that they did some renovations, but it should be a really, really good time. So if you're interested in attending, uh, feel free to visit, uh, successandchallenges.org and purchase a ticket. As I said, it's going on tomorrow. If I'm not mistaken, it starts at six P.M.
Mr. Miller, is that Mr., is that Reverend Wood that's still?
Absolutely. Yeah, and his wife Paula. Uh, uh, the next, uh, kind of celebratory event that, uh, I plan to attend in the next two weeks is an organization that's really, really close to my heart because I am a product of this program, uh, and local mentoring organization, Operation Jump Start. Uh, and they've been around for twenty-five-plus years. I think they're going on thirty years now. Uh, but all things considered, they host an annual event called Scholars Day where they celebrate, uh, their graduates, and all of the young men and young women in their program are first in their families to go, uh, to college. And, uh, let me tell you, from not only my personal experience, but somebody who's attended at least ten of these things, uh, the space is, uh, very, very thick with excitement because I don't know if you've ever physically seen the moment where you're seeing a family break a cycle of poverty, but, uh, when you're there and you're celebrating with these families, uh, uh, who are going to be watching their young child go to college and, uh, maybe at the time had no idea that this is, uh, what their trajectory was gonna be. It's always really, really cool. And so I'm excited to, uh, hang out with, uh, those folks over at the Yacht Club that's gonna be going on, uh, at the Yacht Club on June eleventh. Uh, that is, uh, morning event, but once again, uh, tickets are still available, uh, for that event at operationjumpstart.org. And, uh, last, uh, but not least, uh, I don't want to forget about the Juneteenth event that's going on at Rainbow Lagoon. Uh, it is absolutely free. Uh, this is on Juneteenth weekend. Uh, so, uh, feel free to participate and attend. Uh, should be a lot of fun. I know last year I had way too much fun, and I'm looking to have twice as much. So, uh, I hope as many of you, uh, that would like to attend can attend. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I'll, I'll be very, uh, brief. So I just want to remind folks, um, that we have our links for you to provide input on our LCAP and budget engagement process, on our facilities master plan. Mr. Moskowitz, I got the text and email at four thirty-two P.M. for our expanded learning opportunities. Um, so, you know, we know that our school year is coming to an end. This isn't an end-all, be-all, but just reminding our families, our students, our community members, um, around ways to be involved and engage with our district. We're not going anywhere, so we don't expect for you not to, uh, you know, participate. And I also want to, um, just share a few thoughts. So these last couple of weeks have been heavy, uh, for many families and, um, parents and educators, uh, in our country. And just want to remind folks that our district, um, is doing everything we can and will continue to do everything that we can, um, for our schools to be safe and healthy and, um, be a place where our students feel welcomed and safe. And so, um, I'd like to, uh, when we get to the adjournment, adjourn, uh, our meeting tonight in memory and in honor of the victims and the families of the victims and loved ones of the victims in Uvalde, Texas. Um, so I'll end my board report, uh, with that. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Miniz. A few things, and I'm, I'm just going to build on the opportunity for engagement, our families, and just restate, lbschools.net slash LCAP, lbschools.net slash ELOP. In addition to the survey that went out, you can review those draft plans for anybody that's interested. And lastly, the facilities master plan and the draft sustainability policy can be found at lbschoolbonds.net. Um, those are available for review. Along with that engagement, I'd like to encourage the community to vote. Um, we have all received our ballots via mail, so it takes nothing other than getting the voter registration information out and to cast your ballot. The vote, voting is, um, at an all-time low at this time, and it's a way to engage civically. So encourage the community on that note. Um, it was mentioned that this is Pride Month, so schools and others in the community will be celebrating the accomplishments of our LGBTQ plus community, and so more to come on that, I anticipate in the next board meeting. Um, and graduation is happening, so just want to acknowledge we have more than five thousand students starting on June eighth of next week that will be crossing the stage. You will be in many, at many of those ceremonies. And then also, our student board member tonight, uh, mentioned Grad Walk. So for the community and for anyone who doesn't know, Grad Walks are the opportunity for graduating seniors to visit nearby, uh, middle and elementary schools to inspire the younger students about what it's like to be a graduate. So they typically go out in their caps and gowns. Some go far from their campuses. They go on, do, on feeder, a feeder pattern. They talk to students, and they're clapped through many of our schools. And it's a very special experience, so if you have not experienced a Grad Walk, I encourage you to get out. It's, um, it's really inspiring. Um, Cabrillo High School was just recently recognized as a Project Lead the Way Distinguished Schools. We want to give props to our Cabrillo High School. And then lastly, Mrs. Craighead, you mentioned on tonight's, um, gift report, we have a gift coming in from the John Mallinger Charitable Foundation. John Mallinger and his family are local residents of Long Beach. He's, um- John Mallinger and his family are local residents of Long Beach, he's um, I believe retired, he might say, PGA golf professional who um, wants to make a difference in the community, and he is back holding an annual event called The Give. So he has given that, the reason I'm talking about it is because it came directly to me, um, and I've worked with him, and that gift will be used from, likely for middle school sports, for students who want to go into high school sports, especially in places where the high schools are having a hard time fielding full teams. So building a pipeline, and I have a vision that the money would also be used to pay high school students and their coaches to coach younger students who would be coming up into high school sports, and so um, the Mallinger Foundation has been very generous. In addition to that, there will be gifts coming forward to support our golf team, so want to also add my thanks to your thanks, Mrs. Crackhead. And that's my report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker, any announcements?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mine is a quick one, uh, so earlier today, I asked Mr. Moskovitz uh, a question about our TK folks, and I must, might have misspoken it, because I might have just said Kinder, but uh, the question was centered around um, the staff support for our TKs, and apparently there was a bit of a miscue there, so I wanted to give him the opportunity to correct it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, any, anytime there's a question of clarification, that's helpful. Uh, yeah, I thought you had said kindergarten, but if you had said TK, I do want to clarify, so for our TK classrooms for next year, the max class size will be twenty-four students, and there will be two adults, at least two adults in the room at all times, so the ratio will be twelve to one, and in some cases, eight to one. What I was referencing in my response was to kindergarten classrooms for next year.
And thank you for clarifying. Once again, I know there's one person who's gonna be really excited about that.
Any other announcements, colleagues?
Yes, Dr. Benitez, thank you for your words, for those of us who don't know what we can do to help in weeks like this, I will say that the Long Beach Fire Department is hosting a blood drive next Wednesday on June eighth at their LBFD headquarters on Lakewood Boulevard from eight thirty to two thirty, so you can check out their social media to sign up, it's through our Long Beach Red Cross as one way that we can show support and help.
Thank you, board member Kerr, uh, anything else, colleagues?
Yes. Um, high school graduations are coming up, and I would encourage all of our students uh, to be safe, and I would encourage all of our adults to make sure our students are safe. It, it, it tends to be a dangerous time because kids take celebrations a little bit too far, and you've worked, you've worked too hard, and we care about you too much for uh, anything bad to happen, so please, all you graduating seniors, please be safe, have fun, but be careful.
Thank you. If there are no other announcements, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.